Ready, Hartley?
Go ahead.
I'm ready.
Go ahead.
We gotta figure that out.
Yes, please. I'm ready?
Yes, go ahead.
That was yes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the Selectments Meeting for October 1st, 2019. Can I get a roll call, please?
Wait, Mr. President?
Don Klein, President.
And Sulecio is present. We call the meeting to order. Join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands where my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to announce that the meeting is being taped recorded. And anybody else taping it? No, okay. Chairman's additions or deletions? I think the only thing we're adding is the list that didn't get printed somehow, right?
Correct.
Okay. Public comment period. John?
Good evening, John.
Can we do it for you?
It's mystery. I know we have those signs that Highway or whoever puts out to announce meetings, events, so forth and so on, and I noticed that we have not for Greg's Run, which I believe is on the 12th of October. We are having an informational meeting to discuss the results of the Charter Review Committee's work, and that's going to be on the 10th. And if there was any way that, at least for some days leading up to that, we could reprogram those signs to announce that meeting, that would be really delightful. And I think it would be another good way to let people know what's going on, especially if we're gonna have some challenges in terms of at least a live broadcast.
Got it, yep.
Jim will take care of that for you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Got it? Okay, 2.1. Appoint Ronald James Petrucci as full-time firefighter paramedic for the Townsend Fire EMS Department contingent upon the passing of pre-employment medical exam, core check, and with a one-year probationary period. Do you have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion we appoint Ronald James Petrucci as a full-time firefighter paramedic for the Townsend Fire EMS Department contingent upon the passing of a pre-employment medical exam and core check with a one-year probationary period.
Second.
Let's get moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
3-1. Discussion on revocation regarding one-day special license for the VFW Post 6538. Jim?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is a license that you've already approved for an event that an event to be held down at the Legion on October 5th. Since you approved this until this evening, the VFW has had a visit by the ABCC, and they are no longer a licensed establishment, either on the club side, nor the ability to be a licensed establishment for one-day licenses. There's some discussion about BYOB, bring your own beverage. The regulations, there are copies of the guidance in your packets, if you had a chance to look through that. That defaults to the local licensing authority for rules and regulations, and we don't currently have rules and regulations that would govern that, so it'd be something to seek a policy if you wish to open up the possibility of BYOB establishments. But as it is now, I did stop down last, I guess it would've been Thursday night, and visited with some of the folks down at the B and had a discussion about what this means to them to be a not-licensed facility, specifically that they can't bring alcohol in from other locations and serve. They are pursuing becoming they were calling it a Veterans Home, which would be a category of facility that if it's a nonprofit, might be able to get a club license. So there's some steps between hearing and what they're ultimately going to be in their next incarnation, but as of right now, this permit that you already issued, it'd be appropriate to have a vote on the board to rescind because they're no longer able to have it.
Okay, so they realize, though, that even if they pursue any private club kinds of things, that they would have to
They do.
Come back.
They do, yep.
Because this, the regulation that was in our packet was pretty specific. They could bring in wine, they need to take it home, it's just like
But in a private club, that also involves, when you look at that, the organization serving a meal, so it has to be in conjunction with the ability to sit for a meal.
Yeah, it's just like going into a restaurant in Lexington where they don't have
Or Il Fornos in Pittsburgh is the example that I use.
You bring in your bottle of wine, you sit and have dinner, and then you leave with
Take with it, right.
Right.
So as of right now, they are alcohol-less, and this should be rescinded.
Question?
Yeah.
Does that also, that affects the other two organizations that use that building, right? The American Legion?
There is no ability to have alcohol
Alcohol in that building.
For sale in that building.
Okay.
Now, where this gray area is if they're having their The meeting they were having with Veterans of Foreign Wars and disabled vets last Thursday night, they had a cooler with Coke and Sprite and beer. I told them, I'm not certain that this is an allowable thing or not allowable thing, but you know, you've got yourself set up for this evening before you do this again. You know, pop up to the office, we'll get on a call with council, we'll make certain that whatever you do isn't gonna put you in harm's way because without a liquor liability policy as well, I'm not certain that there's a full appreciation for what they're opening themselves up to.
Big time.
So.
Big time, yeah. It's a big liability. Okay, could I have a motion, please?
I make a motion that we revoke
Rescind.
Rescind the one-day liquor special license for the VFW Post Number 6538. For, what date was this for?
October 5th.
October 5th.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
3-2. Review approved sign policy number 05-2019, Contracts and Contract Procedures. Second reading.
Madam Chair, you each have a copy of the document with a couple of highlighted areas that are consistent with your earlier comments. In the introduction, adding the sentence, "Questions should be addressed to the Towns' Chief Procurement Officer." Section C, applicability, making it clear that this is a policy that applies to goods and services contracts and not employment contracts. Additionally, the legal counsel, there's a reference there to Appendix A, which is the procedures, and then a new section I in the policy. That is the last section that just says the town's contracting procedures are included by reference in this policy as Appendix A. However, it is recognized that procedures may be changed more frequently than the policy. And then you get Appendix A, which are the actual
That's more the administration side of it.
Correct.
Okay. Appreciate that, thank you. Any questions?
Just format, are we gonna?
Yeah, it'll go on the standard format.
Two will have a motion.
I make a motion that we approve and sign out of session. Policy number 05-219, Contracts and Contract Procedures. Second reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded, so this makes it official.
Agreed.
After the second one, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
3-3. Discuss approved plaque writing for the former site of the West Village Female Seminary, the West Townsend Fire Station.
Madam Chair, this is coming in from Alice Struthers, who has done the legwork, all of the work on this matter. And the quote that appears on the back of the page you have in your packets is an appropriately procured quote, and we'd just like to let the board know that we're going to be going forward with this. There's no requirement of a vote of the board on this, this is informational for your part, but we will be going forward with the $1,315 plaque for the recognition of the West Village Female Seminary.
Okay.
Where do you put it?
There is a piece of granite that exists next to the flagpole, now an upright piece that was placed for this purpose.
And thank you to Alice for doing that for us with the while coming. Not because she wasn't working on it, but just tie up the loose ends here for her. Thank you very much. 3-4. Review discuss net metering credits, Energy Committee recommendation.
And if I may, Madam Chair, in your packets in 3-4, you should see an email from Brent Carney, the Chair of the Energy Committee, in response to your suggestion that the proposal for net metering credits for the solar array that's being built on West Meadow be sent to the Energy Committee for their consideration and comment. Present to his email, they support the idea of going forward and getting into a discussion, negotiation, and ultimately contracting for net metering credits. They share the concern that was expressed at the initial meeting we had, that the 15% looks to be a low offer out of the gate. So what they're asking is that additional research be done with other communities' most recent percentage discounts and reengage with the folks at Next Amp regarding the contract for the contracting of these net metering credits. For those that are following at home, basically what this would be is it would reflect for the totality of the number of kilowatt-hours of electricity that we use in the town, the government, not town-wide residents, but the government. We would purchase that number of net metering credits, a credit equals a kilowatt-hour, and we would see a reduction in whatever that percentage is that's ultimately settled on, if it's to be settled on, a reduction of that percentage in our bill. So if it was a dollar, we'd see the credits for 85 cents. So it will have a significant impact, a positive impact on our budget.
And to go forward with doing some, a final contract and doing some comparisons, is it Brent and the
Brent?
Energy Committee that's gonna be doing that, or is that something that you'd do?
He's asking that I do it.
And then review the contract?
And then review the contract. The contracts are relatively standard. I think the one that I've seen for Next Amp actually is a KP baseline contract, so I would forward that off to Adam to make certain it's consistent with whatever the template is that they use for this purpose. It's a pretty obscure type of a contract, so I'm sure that it's gonna be the same, very similar, if not the same, but we'll make certain that it's gonna line up with Adam.
Weren't there two options for this?
There were the two options. One was a set rate with an annual escalator, and the other is the percentage discount off whatever the rack rate is each quarter. The Energy Committee supports the percentage discount. Given the rack rate, you don't know if, you know, when shale was, you know, came online in the last, you know, four, five years, and the price of the barrel of crude dropped, if we were locked in at, you know, the 14 cents a kilowatt-hour, and then that, the floor dropped out and it was all of a sudden 10, we'd still be paying the 14, and it would escalate each year thereafter. So without being captive to, you know, the ebbs and flows of what the market's doing this way here, we just have that guaranteed percentage off the rack.
Good.
So do you need authorization from us, or is this something
It's just informational at this point. It would require, ultimately, it would require a vote of the board, and to do a contract in excess of three years would require a town meeting vote, and they'd be looking at, generally they're looking at a 20-year contract with options to extend by mutual agreement for two periods of five years thereafter.
Well, they have to be at 20 because that's what the bylaws is.
Right.
So how long do we think it's gonna take to tie this up?
I would anticipate by the special town meeting, that we don't yet know when it will be, but this would be targeted to be completed by that, so we could consider it in budget this coming fiscal cycle.
Thank you. Any other questions? 3-5. Review discuss vegetation management plan. Okay, I asked for this to be on the agenda because as a citizen, I'm concerned about spraying of things that impede vegetation, and to tell you the truth, I don't care why they do it. Because of the amount of conservation and water that we have. I just get kinda picky about what people do near my water. I understand that nobody really, other than, who did it? Dave
Henkel, yep.
From our conservation, our conservation agent, sent a nice questioning letter to Unitil. But I don't see any place where either we got a response, or we said, you know, this area is off limits, that area is off limits. Particular concern to me, and this is just me personally, so pipe in, okay? There's an area along 119 going toward the harbor where they took a lot of trees down. My understanding is that that's state land, and they have permission from the state to take down the trees. Well, that's fine, but it also borders our wetlands. It borders our river, and I don't particularly like the idea of spraying near the water, both sides. Our water department down in West Townsend, there's water that you can see there. I don't like the idea of spraying anywhere where there's water. Timberly Park, which is Brook, they took trees down on both sides of Ash Street. There was no problem in terms of conservation and taking down those trees. They had the permission of the Water Department Superintendent to take down the trees, but I don't want them spraying down there.
I did receive just 10 minutes ago a response from David regarding the question I asked at your reception earlier today. If he could be in attendance, short notice, he wasn't able to be here, but he did just this evening at 5:37 receive a response from Unitil, if I could just
Oh, that'd be wonderful.
Bring it to the board. Hello, David. And again, David is the Conservation Agent. Thank you for speaking with me. This email is follow-up on our conversation. As I mentioned, Unitil will not be using Camstat Tree Growth Regulator in Townsend this year. We are only doing low-volume foliar application along the off-road rights of way. This is part of our Integrated Vegetative Management Plan, which is currently on a five-year cycle. We have refiled our five-year vegetative management plan with the state and submitted a yearly operations plan for that work as well. The Storm Resiliency Program, which uses the Tree Growth Regulator along road sides, is not being done in Townsend this year. Please let me know if you have any other questions. Thank you, Sarah Senkewich, Manager of Forestry Operations and Sustainability, Unitil.
And that almost sounds like what she wrote here.
Yeah.
But it doesn't sound, I mean, how do we know? Has Unitil determined this approach to be the most effective management system in reducing and eliminating adverse growth? Have other processes been examined that could prove effective? This is from Dave. I didn't hear her answering that. I'm just not happy with spraying something that I don't know what it is. So, oh, and there's a stretch along South Road where they took down a whole bunch of trees and pushed everything back. It looks like the devil, and
My question is, they go ahead and do this, and all of a sudden our water system gets contaminated. What's the Unitil's indemnification there? What's their liability?
We'd have to look at their filed plan with the Commonwealth, but I'm drawing up a copy of the map. If they're doing just their off-road
What does off-road mean?
Basically, following the power lines, so where they have easements along the power lines. But you do have the substation in West Townsend.
Yeah.
And you have power lines that traverse the Zone 1, Zone 2 at least, if not Zone 1, through West Townsend, so
And then it cuts across here, too, at the farm.
Yep. Would the board like to invite Sarah to come in?
Yes.
Yes. I think that would be prudent.
I just, I don't want anything
I know we're not the only ones that are concerned about this, so
No, we're not. It came up last time.
It did, and it was after the fact that
And
Would you like Dave Henkel as well?
That would be wonderful because he knows the questions to ask.
You have somebody from the water department?
Water, well, Dave will be here from Conservation, but water as well, okay? And I simply don't want them starting to do any spraying until we have a discussion with them.
Yep. Got it.
Everybody on board with that?
Absolutely.
You okay with that, John?
Yeah.
So the next meeting, Jim?
Yep.
3-7. Governor Baker's e-cigarette and vaping ban.
We skipped 3-6, I think.
3-6, yes.
I'm sorry. It's on Properties Committee Appointment Terms. That was a change. Don, you were asking about no, we never, we didn't have
We didn't have
We didn't have any dates for the membership. Was that what the issue was on this?
Yeah, so that's what's added at the last paragraph. I'm sorry, 7/27/2?
1/27/2, yeah. Membership and appointment.
Annually appointed.
Annually appointed or reappointed on, for the last week of June.
Okay, so is this the revised one, for the potential? Or is this, I don't understand, I didn't ask for this one. Where did it come from that it
The request came in from Don, I think, to, on your list, to review the Properties Committee bylaw?
Yeah, that was a discussion we had. It was on one of the things that I had checked off, that we had talked about, and you add, I put "add to," but I forget what we
It had to
It was this, which we've already done, so
So
I thought it might be something new.
I don't think it's new.
Okay, so we're good then.
Okay, so we're all set. All right, good. That's done.
Now the e-
Now the e-cigarette and vaping ban. I mean, we have the declaration, we've all heard the news. I did not, because I didn't feel it, it was my place, I'm not the liaison with the Board of Health, but I did see some correspondence saying that the Tobacco Alliance, people from Luenberg, I mean, from Leominster, were going to be going out to any establishments in town
Correct.
And doing the
Compliance check.
Compliance stuff.
With our representative from Neshoba Associated Boards of Health, Jim Greffey.
Okay.
So it was the regional group that, the alliance that works with all the communities in North Central Mass and our
What I don't understand is why does our Neshoba Associated Boards of Health, who is being directed to do the compliance stuff, need to be accompanied by someone else?
My understanding, when this question came up last week, is that a policy decision has been made by the Board of Health to work across boundaries regionally with this association. And they're not deputized in any sense to be our agents, which is why anything they do in town, they're accompanied by our
I'm just saying, why do they even have to go then? Because it's our Boards of Health that are charged with it.
My understanding is the way the ban is written is that the Associated Board of Health are going out and as the representative of the state, giving what the, what the state has said for a ban, making sure that all the stores are in compliance.
Following up on it.
But, no, the following up is going to be on our Board of Health, so our agent has to do, if anybody fails to comply, it's gonna be our agent that has to initiate anything.
Our agent or our administrator? Because the
I thought
Agent is through the Neshoba Associated, our administrator is our in-house, full-time
I thought it was our agent, but it might be the administrator. I didn't see it in here, and I didn't, I only, I just got this today, so I didn't go through the whole thing, but I just curs, but I know that what was stated on the news, because I saw the news reports, it's
And in correspondence from Town Council as well.
Yeah, that's right, too. I did see that one.
Right. So in correspondence from Town Council, and in the news, it was pretty plain that the buck stops here, okay? It's our Board of Health or Boards of Health. And not a private agency. What I'm concerned with is we should not be giving up our responsibility to a private organization.
And I don't believe we are.
Okay.
Again, my understanding, having spoken about it last week after you raised the question, was that this is just, so there's consistency across the region with how these things are rolled out. So we have the ultimate obligation, there's a regulation that we're held to, and this group across the region makes certain that everybody is marching in the same step. So you don't end up with pockets where you have, you know, Townsend is enforcing the regulation and Luenberg is lax, so you're just moving the issue one community over. So across the line, everybody is holding the same line.
Okay, I guess.
Can they have, I mean, it's, because it's an elected Board of Health, and this is their policy, we could ask
Your opinion is on, right?
Yeah, and I went to their last meeting, but unfortunately, this ban didn't come out until the day after their meeting.
Would you like to invite a member of the Board of Health to come and just make certain everybody understands all the moving parts here?
I just, it's like it's none of my business in one way, but in another way, when the governor says this is the procedure, or it's not the governor, it's the public health saying, this is how you're gonna do it. I just wanna make sure that we have responsibility in that.
Yep, and my understanding is we do, and we're
That's fine, that's fine, okay? I just wanted to make sure we weren't delegating it to a private organization, regardless of what the agreement with that private organization is.
Gotcha.
Thank you. 3-8. Discussion update regarding pavement project and special town meeting.
Yes, now for the rest of the story. The plan we've had going forward has been to have the second of two votes required for this project to go forward, the first having been at the annual town meeting. Been advised since our last meeting by council that the timeline, if it was an override, general override, operating override, would have allowed for this vote on October 19th to go forward with the spring town meeting vote still being effective. Because it's a dead exclusion, there's a distinction, and it's a 90-day window between the votes, which means the spring town meeting vote has effectively timed out, and we would need an additional town meeting authorization. So the question becomes, is it your wish to move forward and have the vote at the ballot in October, and then go to a special town meeting when we're to hold one later in the fall? Or go to the town meeting first, where the questions can be answered, and everybody can get their feelings off their chest, and then go to a ballot vote after? I did have an opportunity to talk with the Chair about it, and obviously, it's a board decision, so she couldn't commit in any way to what
I could go the second route, because that way we can just, you know, let's the town decide if we wanna move forward.
Right.
And I mean, that's, that's pretty much how I felt, too, was
I mean, if we have to, no matter what we do, either order, nothing's getting done till next spring.
But, but I think that, I think that the concern that I have is, we were trying to anticipate and answer all of the questions that they had regarding the ballot vote. And I'd rather go back to the town meeting where everybody can talk as long as the water vapor will let them, and ask and ask the questions.
That we didn't learn until the day after the elec-
Exactly, exactly.
Take that step up, our public hearing, basically.
Yeah. And I mean, that, everybody will have a chance to ask all of the questions, and why does it say this? Why will it say this on the ballot? And, you know, why is it this way and that way? And get it all-
Yep.
The other piece of-
And then formally, they'd have to vote on it again at town, at the, at the special, but-
The, the, the other thing where, where the chair was, was, I think politely being correct, but not wanting to poke at me on it. I spent some time, my own time, I'm being careful here, on a weekend, to put together that flyer that I showed you. I've since been, been dragged kicking and screaming to the realization that, from the, the Oxford campaign, in the Commonwealth, that such a flyer is not able to be sent out by the town. You are limited to date, time, location, and a general statement about what the, the question is. I, argue is a strong word, but discussed, you know, forty-four dollars is a fact. That's, that's not an opinion, that's not advocacy, that, you know, that's a fact. No, no, it's not.
But see, I don't have a problem with that.
I just wanted to make clear that if and when we get to the point of talking about some sort of a handout literature, it's a far narrower path we've got than-
But that's okay, because it fits with what we just talked about.
Sure.
Okay? There's nothing wrong with publicizing we're having a special town meeting. Here are some of the topics on the special town meeting, okay? Bing, that's it. This is a special town meeting, this is where it is and when it is. And we have a potential, um, special election-
Right.
On this day. Please come, ask your questions. And they can ask the questions and get the answers on the forty-four dollars.
Correct.
Okay? And everybody hears the same answer at the same time.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah. As long as we can get something out that gets people to come to the meeting so that we can answer those questions.
Yeah. I mean, there's, there's other things. One of the things that's, that's gonna be on there is the charter review.
There'll be ample, exciting-
Yeah.
Fun things to come up with.
Yeah. Or go here to get a look at the other things. You know, it ended, and have it vetted, please.
Yep.
But as far as I'm concerned, that's even better.
So, what would be required would be an official vote, rescinding your vote of an October nineteenth special town meeting. Just so Kathy can have a piece of paper to close the, the loop.
Okay. I make a motion. I make a motion that we rescind our vote, uh, for the special town election on October the nineteenth.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jim, I'd like you to do one other thing, if you could.
Yep.
If our assumption is that we're gonna have the special, and a week or so later, have the validating vote, were it to pass in the special, what are our requirements, or can you find out what our requirements are in terms of setting that special?
Correct. You won't be able to do it within the week. I believe thirty-five days is as soon as you can do, and ninety is the furthest out you can go. So, um, and Kathy needs a month in order to get things ordered, um, because you have a two-week before for absentee ballots. So the thirty, the thirty-five days is, is about the best target, and that'll also let us know if that passes a town meeting, because what we don't want to do is try to schedule it, order the ballots, and then have it not even pass a town meeting.
Right, okay. So, we could actually say, at town meeting, this will be the date.
Correct.
If that passes at town meeting, this will be the date of the special election.
Correct.
Okay? Good. Because I don't want to run into, oh, we missed the date, or we don't have enough time, or something like that. Thank you. Three, nine. Your first reading regarding direct report evaluations policy.
If we could put that up to the next meeting, I would appreciate it.
Town administrator updates and reports, Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have-
Just missed it.
Did, was here is-
Is there any session now?
No.
No, no.
You just missed it?
They just voted to rescind the October nineteenth and to look for a date after a special.
All right, can I-
Sure, come say it.
Just be aware, we have the presidential primary March third.
Oh, we wouldn't go that late.
No, what I'm saying is, is I prefer not to have an election in February, one in March, and one in April.
No, we're talking about-
April?
No, we're talking about the special in the fall, hopefully.
Well, the town meet.
The town meeting.
Yeah.
Followed, if that passes a town meeting again-
Yeah.
Followed within thirty-five days by a special election.
We can't put it off till April?
If we put it off until April and it all passes-
We have ninety days.
We only have ninety days.
Oh, yeah, we only have ninety days.
Well, we only have ninety days for the special. You're saying, put it off until the April town meeting?
Well, you can have the, you could have the election before the town meeting.
They've decided not to do that.
No.
Just they want the, be able to have the discussion again at a town meeting. And if it passes a town meeting, then go to a ballot. So if we have a, let's actually have this discussion now, if you don't mind. We're gonna talk in a few moments about the fact that the closing for year-end is going to be pushed based on some computer stuff that's gone on in the last week. So special town meeting isn't likely going to be October. November is going to be optimistic. So if we, if, if we have mid-November, you've got December, January, February, mid-February, when is the presidential primary?
March third. See, in that whole time, though, you've got to remember, we may have five days of early voting for, um, the primary. We have dog licenses, which are big at that time. We have the census, which we're trying to get done by April first. That's our busiest time.
I would, I, I want to just do it in the fall, okay? Let's assume worst-case scenario, we're talking about December first. Okay? December first, and-
Can, can it be with the, the presidential primary or cannot?
Cannot.
Yeah, so.
Cause if you want to do a special town meeting before, that's easier-
Well, we have to do a special town meeting.
In the fall, but I'm saying one within ninety days of the, the April election. That's a lot easier to-
But the, the reason, we want a meeting first.
Right.
Okay?
Right, that's what I'm-
But if we put it off until April, and then thirty-five days later, a special election?
No, no, no.
What's she saying?
The election in April. Put the question on the annual election, which you're gonna get more people here.
But even April is late for us to get off the, you know, to, to get moving on the project.
So March, February, so that's a January-
See, we've got all winter to start working on, getting ready to start paving in the spring.
Well, I, I, I don't think that, I don't think that an April decision, an April go is gonna impact, that we have the plan. What's gonna be determined is what's getting done on the plan, and that's dictated by the funding. So if we know that we're limited to just the internal dollars, that'll dictate how much gets done off the plan. If we know that on April election, that it passes, then we have, we know we have more funding, we can norm.
I don't know why everything is so complicated.
To Kathy's point, if it's April twenty, third week of April, so March, February, you could have, you could have a special in January.
Yes.
The end of January, and have the question voted
In-
In April on the ballot when you have the town election, you have people coming out. I don't know, and I won't know until Lori is able to get a better sense of things, when we're likely to have the ability to get free cash certified.
Well, let's, let's get that first, and then have this discussion again.
Because that might be January anyway.
Right.
I mean, it's gonna dictate this whole thing, no matter what we do.
Well, it's not, it's not, because, you know, Kathy's suggestion of doing, you know, of, of just doing it with the ballot in April, is, we could do that too.
Well, I don't want to put anything off the table right now.
Cause that would save, you know, six, seven thousand dollars to have a question put on the ballot in April, isn't gonna impact the cost.
Special town meetings?
No.
No, we would have one in January.
It would be at the, one in April, May.
No, no. The, the, we would have the special town meeting for-
In January.
Charter, for-
Other stuff.
Year-end, free cash stuff, for this in January. If it passes January, you then have, on the April annual town meeting election-
Right.
The votes for selectmen and everybody and discussion.
Your question.
All right, so, so the-
That's beyond the ninety-day window.
So the discussion is, this discussion will-
February, March, April. We'd have to have, make sure we had the vote late January.
Yeah, see, that's not making sense to me for, for a special town meeting, for a fall special town meeting, even understanding the, the issues that we have. But I'm with Wayne in terms of, let's, let's wait a while and see. Let's see how things go.
Because the closing is gonna dictate that.
That's right. So, no decision other than we just rescinded the-
Okay.
October one.
I would just like you to be mindful of our busy time in our lives.
I understand.
And going to an election a month is not fun.
Understand.
Okay, that's all.
I think it's just a matter of, of what, how the timing works out. I don't think anybody in town is gonna like the idea of going out to a special town meeting in January, given the weather that we get here in January. And that's my concern.
Well, the other thing is, um, I don't know how many articles will be on the fall.
There's a few already.
Because then if you put the charter on it, you know how long that's gonna take.
That's what I'm saying.
So you could even put the charter and, um,
Pavement.
The pavement plan on a separate town meeting.
Then we're back to two town meetings.
Yeah, but town meetings are easier than elections.
To put on, but we're talking about dragging people out.
Dragging people out.
It's hard enough to get people to-
How many people even voted on that special election?
That's what I'm saying. So you do another special election in February, the roads are bad.
No, I, I don't, I, I want to do, and the, the board agrees that we do the meeting first, whenever that is.
Well, and that's fine.
Because that gives everybody a chance to ask all their questions.
Right.
And dispel any misconceptions that they have.
What I'm saying, you have, you have an election on a snowy February day, January day, you're not gonna get a lot of people out versus in April, when they come out for the annual election.
Which is why we're back to, we're gonna wait and see what we get for dates here.
Okay.
I think the intention was, Kathy, is that if we could have had the town meeting in October, November, we could have had the election in early December. And then that way, we're still within the good weather window, and it's still fresh in people's minds versus waiting another ninety days. But again, we're, we're up against a-
Right.
The, the other issue that we have, so we're just gonna have to wait till we can see what, how that shakes out.
All right.
But you're off for October, so that's a-
Yeah, that's good. All right, just, uh, if you can keep me informed.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Updates, Jim?
Four point one, 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 grants administrator. Um, we've now gone to the marketplace twice and have received a couple of applicants, but no one with experience sufficient to even have in for an interview. The chair and I have discussed this, and, um, it, it was her recommendation, and I followed it up with reaching out to neighboring communities, see if there's an interest in doing a regional approach. Maybe there's something, if we can cobble together between multiple communities, something that's full-time, that might be of more interest to candidates out there. It gets a little dicey when you're looking at competitive grants. Obviously, um, if it's the run-of-the-mill stuff, like the Community Development Block grant, regional applications are encouraged, so you wouldn't have an issue there. But if there's a competitive, um, infrastructure grant, for instance, that each community has an interest in getting, there'd be a little bit of finesse work that'd be required to figure out how that person's gonna be able to respond to three potentially competing interests. So, the discussion has begun with the other towns, and I'll be keeping you updated as we go forward. But it looks like there's not a marketplace for someone to come to the town of towns and for nineteen hours a week to do grant writing and administration.
Okay.
No young, graduating college person?
I've reached out to the, the MPA programs at Suffolk, Rivingham State, and Clark, just to see if there's anybody that has a, an interest. We did get one application, um, but again, it's somebody that's just coming out of school that has worked retail, that doesn't have any, um, any actual experience doing it. And it may be that they're a wonderful writer, and they'd be able to pick it up quickly, but I, I think if we can find a way to get at it with somebody that has experience, even if it means regionalizing it, that's something we should be pursuing.
Okay, so just gonna look for your recommendations on that.
Gotcha. Collins Center-
Of course, yesterday is the preferred timeframe on that.
Absolutely. Collins Center Comp and Class Plan and Policies Timeline. I have David Colton, who is the, the, um, the assigned staff lead for the Comp and Class Plan coming in tomorrow. He'll be coming in with the schedule and all of the documents that'll be going out to employees for the, the process that was referenced, that your standalone meeting that you had with the Mary Akhiarty from the Collins Center. So specifically, people will get the current job description, they'll get a fillable PDF form that they can, um, respond back to Collins on regarding whether they believe there have been changes to their, their actual job.
So when will that be ready for distribution?
Tomorrow. He's coming in tomorrow with a packet that's gonna be ready to go out. The policies and procedure side of things, Mary is consolidating all the docs that were sent out to her. So when David comes in tomorrow, he's gonna have, um, a memo from Mary as well, that'll lay out the, her expected next steps on the policy side of things.
What's the anticipated timeframe?
Deliverable, and their proposal was four months on the Comp and Class and six on the policies. So we're about a month in.
Okay. So early spring, huh?
Yep.
So, but this should be kept on an update list, so that we're kept updated every-
Absolutely. Trade, excuse me, union contract negotiations, just a, the public update. Um, obviously, the negotiations take place in executive, um, session with the board and in staff time meetings during the daytime for the actual negotiation. We've got each of the four groups through AFSMI that are open and at the table. We had all four scheduled to do ground rules and pick dates, which was a couple weeks ago, so that went off. And then we had our first date of negotiations set for last Thursday, Wednesday? Wednesday, Thursday last week, um, and the first of them went significantly longer than had been anticipated. And we do have an executive session scheduled later this evening where we'll discuss some of that. And then a couple of things occurred at the tail end of that meeting that took us out of the room. And we all agreed as parties that we'd come back to it on our next scheduled date, which is October ninth. But we anticipate that on the ninth, we'll have received the proposals from each of the AFSMI groups representing clerical supervisors, highway water, and the, uh, police officers. On the fire side, um, I, I know that Dawn, you and I had spoken, and you did get some, um, some information regarding your ability and the fact that you gotta, you gotta clean, you gotta clean report.
Yes, so I, I spoke, or Kate and I did emails back and forth, and Kate said that there shouldn't be a problem, although there, even though, even though my son is not part of the union, somebody might raise the question- somebody might raise the question. So what she had me do was file, what do they call it?
Twenty-three B disclosure.
Twenty-three B disclosure, and I filed that today with Kathy, so.
Having, having done that, we'll be able to begin having discussions with the firefighters. They are locked until next year, so they're still within their final year of their contract.
But that doesn't mean that you can't start.
No, and they, and they want to. They want to get at it earlier than we had in the past, so. But having the board liaison, the board rep now clear to be able to sit is, is the, the piece we're looking at, so we're good there. Training opportunities, just a, a quick comment. There was a training opportunity being held in Saugus for new managers. So people that have, which we often do and, and we don't do people favors. We elevate people from within the organization, from a line worker to a supervisory position to a management position. And we like to do that when we can. We like to encourage growth from within, succession plan. But we don't often give them the tools and they'll find themselves sitting at the top of that part of the organization without the necessary skills or experience to do the job. This training is a really good training put on in combination with the MMA and the Human Resource Association. It got booked out before we could get into it. There is another one in the spring. However, when speaking with Collins Institute, who put on the program, they said that some communities have actually hired the Collins Institute to come out and put one on in their community regionally. So looking at the economics of that, we also have a discussion going on regionally about whether or not three or four communities in the area wanna chip in and have Collins come out and provide it for managers.
And we host it.
And we host it here. So instead of waiting till
Significantly less money than the MMA or MPA have done.
It's eight, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars per person to attend it through the, the program that was advertised. And for one or about ten grand, it could be hosted locally, so you know, with three, three communities, four communities each chipping in twenty-five hundred bucks, we could get a pretty decent coverage of our employees that need to serve the, the training.
So you're gonna pursue that?
Yep, that one's underway. And then jointly with the town of Ashburnham, there's a, a training they're putting on through Maya. And it's entitled From Problem to Productive: Effective Management of Challenging Employee Situations. There's an insert in your packet that gives a little bit of the background on that. Again, I think we've, we've not done as good a job historically in town about providing access to these trainings. They've always been available. You know, we sent out an email saying, you know, these are the types of trainings that are available through our employee assistance program or through our insurer or through Blue Cross. And sometimes people will avail themselves to them, sometimes they won't, but we're gonna working through department head meetings on a monthly basis now, really focus on putting these things on the table, getting buy-in and getting people
And encouraging folks, encouraging participation.
Yep, yep. I, I think recognizing the investment that we have in each other and that this is, you know, this is a win, you know. So I think you said to me the other day, you know, the win-win nature of these types of things that
Good for them, good for us.
Yeah. Those are training things going on. Financial updates. This is what we started talking about a few moments ago, special town meeting and year-end closing free cash certification. What you each know individually, but you've not yet heard as a board, is we had a significant computer issue last week, mid-week. Significant is an understatement. It, it, it took down our system and we, to this moment, are still not fully operational. We, um, we had a situation where when people were working at their, their local workstations at their desks and they were doing as they had been directed to do, which is to save their work out onto the server, at the end of the day Friday, it was determined that forty-one days' worth of material that had been saved on the server was lost. What does that mean to this particular bullet item? Both Lori, the town accountant, and Anna, the treasure collector, are beside themselves. To, to say near mutinous would be an understatement because they have been working nights and weekends trying to not only do what is normally very time-intensive, labor-intensive, year-end closing, but also on top of that, trying to reconcile prior months that we'd either been without a town accountant for a period or without a treasure collector for a period. So they were doing the regular work that really spikes at this time of year while also carrying that back work. They got it done and now it's gone. Now, it's gone electronically. That doesn't mean the, the information is gone, but recreating it is not going to be a simple task. So Lori and Anna wanted me to particularly mention to you this evening that they're going to put in whatever time is necessary, whatever level of effort that is necessary to get this done and done quickly. We've had employees within the building say that they will shift their workload to assist in any way that they can if it's something as simple as data entry or something that is within their wheelhouse to be able to contribute. The difficult thing is that while some of it is data entry, a lot of it is sequential. A lot of it is, is very linear, task A before you can get to task B, so we can have a hundred people wanting to help, but if, if there's only bandwidth for one person to be acting at a time, it's not really gonna bring any benefit. Within the next couple of days, we'll have a, a plan, a work plan with targeted dates on what to be expected. This is all as recent as today, when I dealt with Anna and Lori today on the, on their expectations of what it's gonna take to get closed. Obviously, that doesn't mean you can't have a special town meeting. It just means you can't have a special town meeting with anything financial. So if you still wanted to have a special town meeting that was non-financial to deal with charter and to deal with, you know, road projects, you could still do that.
Well, road project is financial.
But it would be an override, debt exclusion, which would be outside of the, the underlying free cash issue. But in terms of doing anything that would require free cash vote, all bets are off until they get a, a better sense for what they can retrieve, what they can cobble back together, what they may have emailed each other back and forth that would still exist because it wouldn't have been on the server. So they're, they're still doing some, some rebuilding, restructuring of, of what data is available electronically instead of just in hard copy.
If it isn't simple, linear, that requires, you know, linear for one person and linear for a second person, if there's a way that, that can be split up, are there other folks that we could reach out to or, or agencies that we could reach out to as well?
That'll be the follow-up. Lori's expectation is probably not, because again, it is, it's a narrow path of things, you know, if then, if then, if then. So having multiple hands on deck isn't necessarily gonna get us there. It's just, it's going to take the time it's going to take for the one person who's got to do it to do it.
But it's, it's also, if they can split it up more than just the two of them,
Sure, yeah.
it's sometimes more cumbersome to try to train somebody else to help. But what I'm suggesting is there might be other folks that used to do the job or, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have used outside firms.
Right.
Yep. Obviously, neither Lori nor Anna want it to be more work for them than is necessary. So if there's a way to lessen the load by having someone come in, they're gonna, they're gonna make sure that that's known.
I mean, I don't know if you, you guys agree with me on this one, but as far as I'm concerned, if, if, you want the most efficient way possible. Okay, and if that takes getting another body in here part-time, I'd rather do that than have something else go by the wayside because that's all they're doing.
Absolutely. That was my suggestion too.
Yeah, I, I'm
Okay, so
Gotcha.
that's the direction, alright?
One, one other thing too was, where the complications may arise is the fact that if we don't have a free cash number certified and it gets to the end of the year, we really, once you get some plan together, we should take a look at that again. As you said, Wayne, we may come to the realization that we're gonna have to have two meetings.
Yeah.
But let's wait to see.
Yeah. And again, this is, this is as fresh as today.
Update next meeting, please.
Absolutely, and daily in between now and then individually. Four point one two two in your packets, you have what is the annual ambulance write-off request coming in from the fire chief. So you should see a document. I respectfully request the board to comply with HIPAA intended purpose of writing off uncollectible ambulance revenue for fiscal years sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. The request is to write off one hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents in uncollected ambulance receipts. There is a
And this is how we've already gone through all of the
This is, this has been as recommended by Coastal, as recommended by the chief, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Originally, the way that this was set up, and I worked with Coastal and I worked with Colton Page at the time, was to go and write these off on a yearly basis, taking the oldest. And we, we did an initial write-off, because this is, again, goes back to being a large sum and we were, we got it down so that there was small sums every year that you would write off. Why does he waited three years to write off this?
My understanding is that it's every year he comes in and
It's just the aging.
It's the aging. So there, there are some that they believed were collectible last year.
Yeah.
They wanted to make certain. They didn't write it off until they were certain that it was uncollectible. So there's always gonna be a lag.
Yeah, we would have been
Yeah, we did.
I just wanted to make sure.
So could I get a motion?
I make a motion that we, um
What are we doing, approving the write-off?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the write-off for the ambulance reserve receipt and that in the term, in the amount of, excuse me, one hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Four one three, project updates. The first is IT phones. I'd like to request the board's permission to push that. We do have a, a discussion later in the agenda to talk about IT. That I think it'd be a more productive discussion. Cable extension, I know that Kate had
Seven-ish.
Yep. Do you wanna pause this stuff and go into executives? We don't have anybody
We have Kate coming, joining us now, basically.
For executives.
Cable extension, Kate's working on that. You guys sent out a letter, right?
Yep, yep. Main Street Water Project is up and operational.
Cable extension, can I just stay on that for a second?
Yes.
I don't understand what the holdup at Unitil is. This is, put up some polls. Tell us how much that costs. Schedule this, alright? If nothing else, I, I, have them come in here. I, I, I'm frustrated.
We have them coming in on the vegetation management already and you know that John will come for that, so we want it to be a doubleheader.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I want it done. I'm tired of talking about it.
Right, we might wanna have Kate there too.
See if Kate can come too.
Gotcha.
Let's just cut to the chase and get this done. Main Street Water, main project is all set.
It's up and operational. Again, there was a little hiccup, but their, the issues have been addressed and they're back operational.
Um, can we put off the H
Yes.
HVAC for the next meeting, please? Water Department contracts, all of that, all set?
Executed, executed and back down the street.
So just to let everybody know, that's all taken care of. Everything is going forward that was required to go forward.
Correct.
Four two, charter review status. Charter is done, sent to Kate for final revisions. There's a meeting for the public to ask questions and, and get involved in the discussion next Thursday. It's on the website. I would just say that, you know, they're not extraordinary revisions, in my opinion. They're bringing things up to date, especially considering things like, you know, we have set number of contracts, personal contracts, and we have unions that we weren't dealing with back then. So there's some, some things that have been updated by town council too. So please come and find out about it. School budget discussion, Jim and I met with a small group of representatives from each town to just kinda talk about preliminary discussions on, on budget for next year. There's really nothing specific to report on that. Housing Con- Conference at Holy Cross is next Tuesday. I'm going, Chaz is going, Lindsay, Beth, and I think Carolyn's going as well, okay? It's, it's put on by the, by the state. Lieutenant Governor's gonna be there and, and it's something I think we can all benefit from hearing the same story. Set work session, session schedule and then you said you were gonna be going away.
Yep.
We have a couple of dates that we were talking about because we have a meeting on the fifteenth and then we don't have another one until the fifth. So we had potentially the twenty-second or twenty-ninth or someday those weeks that we could have a work session.
If it's later in the week of the twenty-ninth, then yes.
Well, we don't wanna do it on Halloween.
No.
The thirtieth?
I should be back the twenty-ninth.
Dawn?
The thirtieth I can do.
Can we say the thirtieth then?
Time?
It's up to you guys.
Six?
Six is good.
Make it earlier if you want.
Alright, five o'clock.
Okay.
Okay.
Five o'clock on the thirtieth.
And we are going to discuss at that work session? We talked about needing to still work on the goals and expectations for the town administrator?
Yep.
Is that gonna do it? There was something else that we were potentially gonna talk about.
I gotta go check my list, I forget.
Is that the top of your list?
Yep, that's the one you and I talked about.
Yeah. Okay, so we can knock that one off.
Madam Chair, before, before we go much further, there's one additional under miscellaneous updates that I had that, that didn't make the, the posting, but it's an annual Greg's Run. And we're not gonna be meeting again between now and the next time. Excuse me, the race is gonna take place on the twelfth. So if it pleased the board, a, a vote to approve the permit for Greg's Run, the annual charity run consistent with the recommendations of the Police Department.
I make a motion that we approve the permit for the Greg's Run.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, he, they usually shut down that little
I just saw the, the detour things yesterday.
Yeah, I saw it today.
I don't remember voting on this.
It's not until next week, yeah, but just the same.
Thank you.
Thank you. Squanah Cook Rail Trail Volunteer Days?
Yeah, I have two things. First of all, do the, the Squanah Cook Rail Trail, they're having their fall event along the, the Coming Trail. Saturday, October the nineteenth and Saturday, November second, there'll be a trail walk. But, uh, volunteer days. And then on Saturday, September twenty-eighth, which I think has already passed, right?
It was last
Yeah. That was last week. They were having a trail walk. The volunteer days, the one on the, the nineteenth is gonna be brush cleaning, clearing for, along the trail. And the second one on the second will be the installation of all the wattles. That's part of their permitting processes. They gotta get the, do the brushing and they've got to do the installation of the wattles before any other work can be done. There's, is this up on the website, by the way?
Yes, it is.
Okay, any other information, you can look it up on the website. They did lose their, their president. He succumbed to cancer and passed away a couple, a week or so ago, which is unfortunate. And they also lost another member who has, had stepped down for personal reasons. And they also lost another member, who has, had stepped down for personal reasons, myself. I also have one other thing. I have a, an apology to make to Jim, in that Jim, I had sent a request to Jim via his cellphone to have Adam on our call for the, our last meeting, unfortunately, Jim wasn't here for the, for the meeting. He and I looked at it afterwards and we realized that I was off by one digit on his phone number, so he never got the message from me. So I wanted to apologize, 'cause I spoke at, at the meeting saying that, you know, he had never responded to me. When in actuality, he never received the message. I don't know where I went to, but.
Somebody got it.
Somebody got it.
Yeah, that didn't mean anything.
Not like the message I sent to Kate today.
No, don't even go there. Board correspondence, there's an email that we just got today that you might wanna forward on to proper board committee. Four five.
I make a motion that we review and sign payroll and Bill Lawrence payroll out of session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Can you just, are you getting her?
I'm at one percent, so I don't know, I don't wanna lose her midway through, I just texted that we'll call you now.
Okay.
Do you want me to start reading the executive sessions?
Yeah.
You have around there?
Yes.
We're pointing to be a journey into executive sessions for the following. Executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position or litigating position, and the Chair so declares, reference all unions, police, fire, EMS, supervisory, clerical, and highway water.
And the Chair does declare.
Executive Session Two would be pursuant to Chapter C thirty-eight, twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiation with non-union personnel, reference the police chief. Executive Session pursuant to Chapter, General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A four, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto of IT systems. And Executive Session pursuant to Chap-, General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A two, strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel and contract negotiate with, contract negotiations with non-union personnel, IT Director.
Second to all three.
Three or four? One, two, three.
Four.
Four.
Four, excuse me.
And do we have to, do you want?
What, and we will not be coming back?
Yeah, we'll not be coming back to open session, we'll adjourn from executive.
Okay, Kate, it's Wayne.
Okay, so moved and seconded, all those in favor of going into executive session, please?
Okay, we're going into executive right now.
Could I get roll call, please?
Don Klein, aye.
Sulisio, aye.
Wayne Miller, yes.
So we are in, going into executive session. We will be finishing for the night, thank you for joining us.